Any questions on what is on the agenda?
You went from the longest consent agenda to the shortest.
I know, I was expecting a little bit more of an offer there. Okay, all right, well, we will go ahead and then call the meeting to order. Start off with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. And we ask that you give us the wisdom to be good stewards of the resources that you have provided for us. We pray for those affected by recent natural disasters, that they recover and find comfort in your embrace. And we also pray that you give us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, and the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. That seems very appropriate. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the praying.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some recognitions and acknowledgements from the DBDA.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So my name is Kelly Lance, and I am the Chair of the Organization Committee for the Belmont Main Street Advisory Board and the DBDA. The focus of our Organization Committee is building human and financial resources through public and private partnerships to achieve a common vision for our Main Street and our DBDA program. Our committee is consistently researching grants and seeking new ways to support our community. Thanks to your help and support, we recently concluded another very successful Friday Night Live concert series, as you see by the t-shirt here tonight. And we've had a lot of great crowds and a lot of fun. It feels like community when we're all up there together like that. And last year, we decided to use tips from our beverage sales to support other local organizations who are also working hard to make a difference in our community. And we are here tonight to make two $2,000 donations to two well-deserved organizations and support the work they're doing here in Belmont. And so with that, I would welcome Amy to podium.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Amy Bosar. I'm the Chair of the Design Committee for the Belmont Main Street Advisory Board and the DBDA. One of the jobs of our Design Committee is to encourage physical improvements in our downtown commercial districts. Preserving and protecting the historic integrity of our districts are a priority for maintaining the charm of Belmont that we all come to love and enjoy. We are extremely fortunate to have the Belmont Historical Society dedicated to preserving the history of the city of Belmont, North Carolina, and its immediate surrounding area. The Belmont Historical Society archives the places, the people, and the times from the past that have made Belmont a community that it is today. The Downtown Belmont Development Association is tremendously happy to support the Belmont Historical Society's work with a $2,000 donation to continue their historic preservation efforts for generations to come. At this time, I invite Myra Joy and Martha Page from the Belmont Historical Society to accept our donation.
I want to present this to you. Thank you for your order forward. Thank you.
Check the presentation.
And I am Myra Joy, by the way, and that's Martha Page back there. But we want to thank you for the steering donation to the Belmont Historical Society. The funds will be instrumental in assisting our nonprofit in continuing and preserving the history of Belmont. And one thing that we want to know is that the funds will be instrumental in our latest project, which we're working in collaboration with the Brother Media Group, is a short video documentary showcasing the richness of Belmont's history. And this documentary hopefully will be completed by the end of year, the first of next year. Officials, if you're loving this documentary, to the citizens of Belmont be completed as it shows Belmont through the years and shows how much history we have here. So thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Al Wall, co-chair with Joe Jordan of the Economic Vitality Committee for Belmont Main Street Advisory Board and the DBDA. The role of the EV Committee is to identify new market opportunities for our traditional commercial districts and to support our existing downtown businesses to maintain a good economic balance for everyone in the community. Another organization in Belmont who is striving to support others in need is Catherine's House. As a transitional home, Catherine's House welcomes women and their children who would otherwise be homeless due to circumstances such as domestic violence, unemployment, shortage of affordable housing, unexpected tragedies, and lack of support network. The Downtown Belmont Development Association is extremely happy to support Catherine's House with a $2,000 donation to continue their amazing work for the people in our community. Catherine?
Thank you.
May I say a few words?
Please do.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and the DBDA, I would like to say thank you so much for honoring Catherine's House with these funds. These funds are actually going to go support our Party for a Purpose event, the sponsorship. So the DBDA will get press for this, and it's going to be used to underwrite our big event that helps support our mission of mercy, to love and empower women and children who are experiencing homelessness through safe housing and services that builds sufficiency. So we're thankful for the funds. Our event is October 6 at Daniel S. Penanico Gardens. So thank you very much for allowing us to accept this check, and have a great day.
All right, well, thank you very much. Now entertain a motion to set the agenda.
Set.
All those in favor? All right.
I'll also make a motion for consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, public comment. There does not appear to be anyone signed up for public comment. State now for our votes. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, a special use permit for the Clay Street subdivision, request to approve a subdivision creating two single-family residential lots pursuant to Land Development Code, Section 5.4.2.4, which allows approval of lot widths smaller than the average lot width in the area. So a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion to go into public hearing.
And seconds?
Second.
All those in favor? Out in public hearing. I'll turn it over to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think with the exception of Councilman Rumpel, all of you are familiar with this special type of process. It's a little different from your normal voting procedure. Your normal agenda items, you vote in what's called a legislative capacity or manner, where you just vote up or down on matters without any need for explanation required. Here, on this special use permit, this is in a different category called quasi-judicial. And it has additional requirements that are procedural that differ from your normal agenda matters. So this is going to sound, for the audience, this is going to sound similar to what you might hear in a courtroom proceeding, except the Council, City Councils are going to sit as judge and jury, and they're going to hear evidence. And evidence is going to be presented by witnesses, and those witnesses are subject to things like cross-examination and questioning like you would hear in a court matter. There is, the strict adherence to the rules of evidence are not required in this. But our normal process is that a witness appears after being sworn, appears, gives testimony. The attorney representing the applicant, which is Mr. John Russell from Mullen Holland Cooper Firm, will have a chance to cross-examine the witness, and then the Council can ask questions after cross. And we'll continue that until the City completes this report, and then Mr. Russell has a chance to present evidence on behalf of his client. I understand his client's property owner is Billy Joe Curry, and he's not able to be with us tonight, not feeling well. But Mr. Russell will be representing him. And I guess at this time, I'll ask our President, which is Alex Robinson, and Tiffany, as the Chair of the Planning Department, if you'll come forward. And John, you want to come also?
Do you need to constitute a panel?
I won't do that now. You develop. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your office. You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truth, all truth, up to its head. Okay, before you start, Mr. Robinson, I need to make sure the panel is properly constituted without bias. And we need, I only have two to three questions, but the recently enacted 160D adds a couple of requirements that I'll add to the question. What you're familiar with is, first of all, I'll ask if anybody has any financial or peculiar interest in the outcome of this proceeding.
None.
Do any of you have a close family business or other associational relationship with Mr. Curry?
No.
New question. Does any member have a fixed opinion on this matter prior to hearing the evidence that's presented that is not susceptible to change? Okay, so you'd be open-minded about it. And you'll make this decision based solely on the evidence you're going to hear presented? And Mr. Heather, last of us, you want to elaborate on, do you have any undisclosed ex parte communications with the applicant? That would be, you want to explain that?
Well, ex parte, yes. Ex parte communications are basically outside of the court, so, and not in the presence of the other party. So, you know, the judge, the fact-finder is supposed to be impartial. So it would be improper for, say, a defendant in a civil suit to walk into the judge's chambers and have a conversation with that judge about the case with the plaintiff not there or represented, because it might sway the fact-finder.
Prejudicial.
Prejudicial.
Thank you. Do y'all, haven't heard that great explanation? Have any of you had any ex parte communications with them?
No.
All right. And last, is there any other reason that you think you can't make a fair and impartial decision based solely on the evidence you're going to give? I thank y'all, appreciate you.
Before we begin, perhaps, I think it's helpful to explain the burden that the applicant has the burden of proof, but what do we mean by the burden of proof?
Proportional to evidence, so it's not beyond reasonable doubt. It's just if you have an equal scale, it tipped slightly, one is in balance. They've met their burden.
Fifty point one percent.
Fifty, and a front. And in this case, potentially, there's maybe no other dissenting evidence, potentially, we're here, there already. But if all the evidence you hear is evidence that seems that the applicant has met their, the proof necessary for you to make the three required findings, and we'll go, I'll go over those that are in your footprint. But after we end the testimony, you'll be required to make four crucial findings of fact that are necessary for us to issue the permit. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Robinson, one last thing is we're pretty, since we don't follow strict rules of evidence, we, our policy is to allow narrative testimony. So after you state your name and address and position, then you can present your staff report in a narrative form rather than being a question. Yes, sir. Okay. You're ready for that. Mr. Wilson, Mayor and Council. Alex Robinson, Senior Planner for the City of Belmont. Introducing into evidence for a special use permit 2023.01, known by us as Clay Street Subdivision. Some of this will be repetitive, but I prefer to read it into the record. The owner is Billy Joe Curry, and the applicant is John Russell on behalf of Mr. Curry. This site location is at the very western end of Clay Street. On the northern side, there's a city, if you're familiar, there's a city lift station across from the subject property. Shown on the slide is 351 Clay Street. It's about forty-three hundredths of an acre. It's requested to approve a subdivision creating two single-family residential lots pursuant to our Land Development Code, which is also the zoning ordinance, Section 5.4.2.4, which allows approval of lot widths smaller than the average lot width in the area. This is quite similar to other cases you have heard from other applicants in that it reflects an application for lots smaller than the averaging rule, which we go by based on the Land Development Code. So as a little background, to develop infill lots by right, you've got to meet this average. You apply for a special use permit to counsel. If you can't meet that average, then it's your decision ultimately to approve it or not. So the lot is 150 feet wide across the front. This is Clay Street at the bottom. 150 wide, 124d, roughly the same in back. It's general residential, which is the genesis for that provision in the lot width averaging. You can see that it is adjacent to Rocky Branch Park, northern side of Clay Street. And the applicant is again proposing two single-family, de-taxed homes. Calculations provided by the applicant and by staff have lot widths in the area of over 80 feet. The applicant proposes a single-family lot, a single-family house on a 50-foot lot, and a single-family house on the 100-foot lot. On this slide, which is a survey provided by the applicant, this is Clay Street, Rocky Branch Park. Note, there is a branch or creek running through this part of the lot, and also a city Belmont sanitary sewer in the middle of a 15-foot peat mountain that flows from north to south to the Clay Street Lift Station. So you can see that the lot has these existing constraints. There's also open drainage ditch running through this part of the lot. The applicant is proposing this 100-foot lot to the west and this 50-foot lot to the east. Any questions?
Doesn't Mr. Russell have a cross-examination?
Yes, he's finished. I'm not there. So you have to meet findings of fact in these matters. You shall consider the following requirements for the special use permit, along with the applicant's responses provided in the application that y'all have. A, the use meets all required principles and specifications of the zoning ordinance and any adopted land use plan. B, the proposed plan, if developed according to the plan submitted and approved, will be visually and functionally compatible to the surrounding area. C, the use will not materially damage to the public health or safety and will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property if located where proposed. These are the staff-recommended conditions to this request. You may take them as they are, you may add to them, you may take away from them. The applicant shall possess a minor subdivision plan in compliance with Section 15.3 of the ALDC. We ask that the applicant work with planning and engineering departments to assess any needed street improvements, including but not limited to a turnaround for garbage trucks and such. And the special use permit shall be valid for one year. That concludes my presentation. Okay, Mr. Russell, you want to ask, do you have any cross-examination?
I just have a couple of questions. Can you all hear me all right? Well, somebody need two mic phones, please. I just want to ask a couple clarifications. At some point during the process, this would have been presented to the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, which includes engineering, police, fire, safety, is that right?
That's correct.
And there were no comments or objections raised by that?
That's correct.
As far as working with the staff and engineering that'll come during the subdivision handle, site planning stage, where you work on the turnarounds?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to move the staff report being admitted into evidence for the record? Okay. Wait a minute, Mr. Robinson.
Yes, sir.
Does Council have questions for us?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, just so that we're all clear as to what's going on here. So we're talking about Land Development Code. And the Land Development Code says that you're going to infill development. Like we're doing here, we've got 150-foot-wide lot that we're dividing into two. That the average lot width has to be greater than the, or the lot width of the parcel being subdivided, those lots have to be greater than the average lot width within 300 feet or one block length of the property, whichever is greater. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we're taking a 150-foot-wide lot, we're dividing into 100-foot-wide property and a 50-foot parcel. And according to the calculations that the applicant has submitted, the average block length is, the average width of the property within one block is 81.37 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the average lot width within a 300-foot radius is 109.15 feet.
Correct.
And because one lot is 100 and one lot is 50, they both need to get a special use permit because they are less than the average lot width within 300 feet, which is 109.15. That's the greater of the two lot widths.
Correct.
And so that's what we're doing here. And if you look at a couple of the statistics, I believe there's 24 lots within one block length. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
And are a number of those lots 100 feet or less?
There is a great, varied mixture of lot widths. And I will tell you that methodologies for determining the lot width internally in the department vary. Some, including me, count only residential lots and not vacant or institutional lots, commercial lots, and so forth.
Were vacant lots included within this count?
They were probably included in Mr. Russell's calculation.
And would those lots be of a larger width, potentially skewing the averages?
They would.
And is the only request for departure from the Land Development Code with respect to lot widths for this property?
I will refer to Mr. Russell. He may have others in his presentation.
Okay. And my last question, if you go back to the plan that was submitted with the two building footprints, can we go back?
Yes, sir.
There is that too. If you look, there's sort of a diagonal line that says ditch centerline, and the building footprints are being constructed over that. Is that a concern?
Well, a little explanation, this is a building envelope, not the proposed building footprint. We haven't seen the, this is as large as the building could be if there weren't physical constraints. Rarely do a person build a lot out as big as the envelope. So this is a basis, this is based on the setbacks, the side, front, and rear setbacks.
This is my other question. That's basically where you can pour your concrete, right? If you were to go all the way to the edges of that?
Correct. But you're going to probably see the footprint of a house somewhere in this area. And not, you don't want to have to deal with it dead.
Right.
So the buildable area of that envelope is, when you're back out in the easement on the west side, and it's setback on the east side, and we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 feet maybe? Of the, like the south side of the envelope, I guess I'm referring to? Yeah.
Here? So if this is 30 feet, and this is slightly approaching on the this side?
Twenty-eight, 30 feet.
Yes, yes, sir. It's going to be a maximum of roughly 28 feet toward the front.
At most.
Yes, sir. 29 feet here, something like that. So having said that, maybe 29 by 40, rounded, that's 1,200 square feet. I can't get it in my head.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from Council?
More of just a statement, just kind of following up on Jim there. It is, if you look at it, 17 out of the 24 properties It is, if you look at it, seventeen out of the twenty-four properties are actually under the average. You do have properties in there particularly one at two hundred feet that kind of throw it into a skew there. So I did just kind of want to make that clarification too, in case it was not clear.
And I feel Mr. Russell has an exhibit he'll present addressing Mr. Zooks. I believe Mr. Russell will have exhibited addressing what you brought up.
Yeah, I was just looking at it from
Yes, sir.
And possibly my question too, I'm sure, but that the lot on the west side here that has a little dagged or L-shaped line with the exit through it, the bottom of the screen here, where does that refer to now? Some of the line, no, actually the middle of the diagram there. Yeah, see that little L-shaped
And probably pavement, it looks like the paved area of Clay Street.
And coming home to the parcel itself.
It would well come onto the parcel. That would be my guess.
Are there any requirements about where, like a driveway placement would be with either of those subdivided parts?
I'm not a builder, but you know, it's sloping down toward the creek in terms of topo. Usually put the driveway on the high side. So it's more flush with the elevation of the local and the house. We wouldn't have a requirement on which side to go, but the builder knows where he wants to go. Or potential builder.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Russell?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, first good evening. It's nice to be back and to have an opportunity to present in front of you again. Just a couple introductory remarks. Having exposure to COVID over the weekend, but to this point of having no symptoms and tested negative, so I'm wearing a mask just in case I'm within the socially distant sphere to try to protect others. But if anybody wants me to, I'm planning to take it off so you can understand what I'm saying. If all, if any of you want me to wear the mask, everybody to do that. Second, before jumping into the meat and the substance of this presentation I did, since it's been a little while since I've been back here, I wanted to offer my congratulations to Mr. Seale and Mr. Rumpfell on your elevation to your positions. That is certainly an honor to be tapped to do that work by your fellow counsel and Bruce. So congratulations on that. And I hope you all find this work rewarding and productive, as I'm sure you will. And then also, Miles, I haven't actually had a chance to see you in person. I know we talked on the phone or emailed to, welcome to Belmont. Congratulations to you as well. I know that from the community, everybody's happy to have you and look forward to hopefully working with you on multiple projects, not just this one. For the record, I forgot to say this, I'm John Russell. My residence is twenty-three Circle Drive in Belmont. My professional address is the Giasenium of Lloyd with Monah Hall and Puffer. And I'm privileged to be here actually representing Mr. Curry and his broker, Fred Warren, who provided one of the exhibits I'm going to introduce. He came in after we were sworn in, so if you all need to question him, he'll be glad to answer questions and he'll be glad to be sworn in if it comes to that. Mr. Curry is six and couldn't be here tonight, but he's owned the property that we're talking about since acquiring it from his mother's estate around two thousand and one. It has been in the Curry family since it came into his father, Hayward Curry, in nineteen forty-seven. So for more than seventy-five years. The Curry family has been in the Reed or Lincoln Park community, as GIS calls it, for many, many years. They've owned this property in question for now over seventy-five. And that will go to one of the factors that I think you all need to sign to find. But in any event, they've been great to work with. My privilege to be representing them. I have a couple handouts I was gonna see if Alec or Tiffany could help me pass around. One of the reasons I got sworn is so that I could introduce these documents into evidence. And I think the staff report's been received. And I will talk about them as we run through the presentation. As Mr. Heffernan said, we're here under a special use permit. Alec provided the code reference five point two point four, which says whenever you're an infill, in other words, not a new development, you have to, in order to subdivide the property, you have to come to this body if you are seeking to property widths which are less than the one-block average or the three-hundred-foot average. Once you get into that category, there are three things that the applicant, Mr. Curry, has to show you. First, that the request meets all the required specifications of the code and any future land use plans. Second, that the request is visually and functionally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And third, that it does not materially endanger public health or safety or substantially injure surrounding property values. So that's a three-part burden that we're required to present to you. As you've heard from Alec, this is general residential zoning. The plan is to stay general residential zoning. Mr. Heffernan, in response to your question, there are no changes and no changes requested to setback, use, building type, or any code requirements. So as to the first finding, whether this meets the requirements of the code or the future land use plan, that's sort of the answer right there as a staff presentation. There are no requests to changes other than the property width. So there's the evidence on that. The second piece, and this is included in the application material, so it's in your exhibit, but the future land use plan does specifically call out the Reed neighborhood as a future conservation, a neighborhood conservation area. And what that means under the future land use plan, and this was, we tried to provide a little bit of detail in the comprehensive land use plan in section A, is that the goal of the land use plan is medium-density housing, low to medium-density housing. It is consistent with the current development pattern and designed to promote or implement revitalization or conservation of older areas of the town or community. So on that, one of the things I wanted you to see is I saw the first exhibit, which is the GIS plaque that was pulled from GIS, gives you an idea, pulls out in the very left corner of that exhibit in the highlighted section, that's the subject property. And zoomed out from GIS, so that you can see really how the properties around that have developed. And you'll see, as has already been pointed out, the fifty-foot lot width is the predominant lot in this neighborhood. That's how the neighborhood was developed whenever it was built in the early part of the twentieth century. Most of the lots, mostly developed lots, and we included some statistics in Mr. Zooks, you've already called some of them out. You know, close to seventy percent of the properties, even including some of the larger tracts, are fifty feet or less than a hundred feet. A majority of the properties are fifty feet or less. So when you look at that, the request to subdivide, if you look at both the future land use plan and the historical development of this neighborhood, really gets at all the findings that you need to make on consistency, is consistent with the requirement, with how the properties developed. And secondly, if you're going to have, if you're going to promote revitalization, conservation of existing neighborhoods, particularly a neighborhood that has mostly smaller homes, mostly single-family homes, you're gonna need to have smaller lots. And that's just sort of the fact of development. Subdividing this into two smaller lots, particularly where you've got some building constraints that Alec pointed out, is consistent with trying to encourage new building, but building that's consistent with the pattern that's already there. So I think you look at both the maps that we would like to, the GIS map we'd like to introduce, your future land use plan, some of the goals of the applicant, and you can get there in terms of the first part, the findings of consistency. The second thing we have to share, visual and functional compatible, compatibility is the word I was looking for. There's a little bit of overlap there, but sort of the same findings, I think, you can, the same facts you can draw from. You've got consistency in lot size with what they're trying to do here, with what Mr. Curry is trying to do. The second thing is that the city of Belmont easement presents a significant constraint. And we actually looked at staff, is this really a variance that was requested or is it a special use permit? The language of the code, section five point two directs us to this process, to special use permit. But it has an element of a variance. You can't build on the very western edge part that rejoins Rocky Branch Park because of the existence of easement. That's gonna stay. And so you've really got what is going to functionally look like two fifty-foot lots, even though the second one is larger. It's really mostly unusable and unbuildable space. So from a visual standpoint, a functional standpoint, you've got essentially two fifty-foot lots. The third piece is public safety and value. One of the reasons I asked Alec the question about the TRC is typically in this process, as you all probably know, prior to coming to you all, there is a staff review, a technical review committee where they get the department heads together, including police, fire, and safety, and make sure there are not any comments, not any concerns. This property happens to be at the end of a dead-end street, so you don't have some of the things you might see sometimes with subdivision about free traffic that are concerning there. Doing these projects in the past has demonstrated that we've got two lots, particularly a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five foot depth. There is sufficient space to park cars on the lots. And we don't have a situation where we're clogging up the street, parking that's been a concern in the past. So, and then in the, in the planning stage and in the subdivision stage, there will need to be some extension of the pavement. The pavement doesn't go all the way to the end of a lot. You'll be working with engineering and staff to develop an appropriate turnaround for garbage, police and fire. So I think there's evidence here you can find that actually public safety is improved by doing this development, which will ultimately lead to probably a little bit better access down to this area, even the city lift station is down there as well. Mr. Warren is here, his letter just kind of gets to the heart of the value issue. And again, the evidence here, finding is it would have to, we have to show that it would not substantially injure adjoining property values. Mr. Warren's conclusion is by MLS data, GIS data, that it does not do that. He's also looked at some documents that have been previously introduced and part of the public record and other cases of those which are not in the Reed community, but there are other parts of town, and those findings are consistent with what he's reporting to you all in his letter. The other thing that of course, for the most part, the adjoining properties are owned by the city or are vacant lots. And one of the points that he made in his letters, you're just not gonna find a decrease in value on vacant properties by subdivision and infill construction. So happy to take any questions. I think kind of our presentation to you is the standards or the showing that's required from the applicant is made by one or more of the facts that I've tried to summarize and that are also included in the staff report and the exhibits that are presented. So we asked me to find in favor of Mr. Curry. I would say that the properties are not under contract, so he's not sold them. The kind of the goal, he and Mr. Warren, who is not only a college friend, back to their place at least in the same state in the sixties, but has continued to work with him on real estate matters and development matters, but also his broker. They feel like that there's just a better chance of finding what they're looking for, the owner that they're looking for, the builder that they're looking for, coming to you all first and doing the subdivision so that they can then show what's available, what the building and what could be done. So that's the purpose. I think one of the things that I mentioned is Mr. Curry's long association with the neighborhood. That provides additional assurance that what happens to this property matters. Who the builder is gonna be, who the buyer is gonna be is important. So thank you for hearing us, again, if you have any questions.
Any questions from?
I have a question. First of all, we certainly are looking at more affordable housing. This looks like a good possibility for that. The question I have, since you've spoken to Mr. Curry and he is not here, can you assure us that he is happy to sell this property and there's no pressure on him? And the reason I asked the question, had a conversation with Anna Young, who's a previous council member. She said there's been a lot of pressure from realtors and developers, to particularly with the older residents of the Reed community. And she said it's gotten to the point it's actually dangerous with regard to some of them. So I want the assurance from you that he is very comfortable with this and this is his desire, there's no pressure.
I'd love to defer that question to Mr. Warren, who's here. That is, they are good friends. Mr. Warren is not, and I think the answer is no, but I'd like to give him further assurance. Let Mr. Warren come up. As I said, they go back fifty years, their friendship. And Mr. Warren is serving as his broker and realtor, confident and working with credit through this process. They would not be doing that if this is not the
And this is not a flippant type of thing. It's to the point where we're gonna have to report this to the board of realtors, otherwise we have to the Reed community. That's why I'm asking the question, to make sure that we're not in that situation with Mr. Curry.
Right. I mean, I assume that there would need to be something other than kind of a statement outside the hearing to go to the board of realtors, but yes, I think there's, I understand. On the other hand, there also is some evidence of really appropriate development in terms of scale, mass and size, what we would think, throughout the Reed community. The fact that there's development and sale and some revitalization is not all a bad thing.
No, it's obviously what we're hearing only may get to be a nodic. So I just want to make sure that's not what we're looking at here.
That is a fair question. And I feel like you'd be more comfortable bringing this up on that.
Good question. You mentioned that there would be improvements to the roadway there regarding to emergency vehicles, waste disposal, turnarounds, that kind of thing. Are you able to elaborate on that, or is it still?
No, I mean, the reason is because if this is approved, they'll have to go to a minor subdivision, which is kind of referenced in the report. And then once the request to build comes in, then they will work. One of the conditions that's recommended is work with engineering, work with staff to make sure there's adequate turnarounds for, usually trash is a big one, but also emergency vehicles. The pavement doesn't go all the way to the fence. So how they will do that, and whether they'll be able to incorporate cul-de-sac, whether it'll only be used on the subject property, whether it'll be part of the city property that could be made for a turnaround, will be up to engineering to determine in conjunction with the builder.
So that's not a condition for approval then of the sub?
One of the recommended conditions which we don't impose is work with staff to make sure those issues are addressed. That's really required anyway, so I'm not sure there's, from a practical standpoint, adding that condition makes any difference. Anybody that comes in to build on this property is already gonna have to do that to get their zoning permit and voting permit approved. But staff sort of explicitly made that part of the conditional on this permit, which should be appropriate. They don't have that.
I believe there's a fence running perpendicular to Clay Street. Is that the edge of property or is, does it go beyond that? Would go west beyond that?
I'm not sure the answer on that.
Perhaps Mr. Warren knows.
Is that all from Mr. Russell? Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Warren, you want to come forward?
Yes, sir, I do. I'm gonna answer any questions that I can that you may have. One of the first things I want to address is
Come here, let me take a look at that. Take it out, okay?
I'll do that.
Put your left hand on top of your right. You swear affirm the testimony about the yes, the truth, no, truth, not truth. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, I was about to say that I wanted to address the concern that the lady had. You are correct. Mr. Curry received quite a bit of, quite a few calls and communications about selling that property. I first mentioned that to him, that possibility of selling it, about two or three years ago. Billy Joe and I met in college at one of the same state converses back in nineteen, back in the sixties. I finished in sixty-seven, Billy Joe finished in sixty-nine. So that's how I know him. And I had talked to him really a few years ago about selling it, before all this rehabilitation started. And he was not interested in selling. And he didn't need money, so he wasn't interested in selling, selling property. But I told him that because of what was going on, if he ever decided that he did want to sell it, I would like to represent him to make sell it, I would like to represent him to make sure that he got what he deserved to get. Because I don't think there's any secret. When developers come in, a lot of times, they come in and they work with the owners exclusively, and the owners don't have the kind of information that they need to make an informed decision. So I set out to establish what I thought was a value of the property. And I determined that Billy Joe was sitting on a pretty nice piece of property, and he needed to be rewarded if he was going to sell it. And I, after checking with Alec, it was determined that the property could maybe be subsided in the two pulses. Doing it that way, first of all, is a benefit to Belmont. The tax rate would go from where it is to substantially much more. And then upon development, redevelopment, the tax base would be even more. So there was a benefit to the city of Belmont, not just, not just the use to cover. So I set out to get the property surveyed. And with Alex's help, we made, well, the determination was made that we have to go through this process. But if, if we could go through this process successfully, Mr. Curry could gain more. And the city, naturally, could gain more. Leave it like it is, you can build one house. Approve the division, two houses can be built. So, and if those houses sell in the range of four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, the tax rate on that property goes from thirty thousand to four hundred thousand. So I saw that as a benefit to the city. Now, in my years of experience, one of my, one of my jobs, I was a nine development specialist for the city shop. And my first project with the city was a public private partnership between the banks, N C M B, First and Wacoia. And that was a development of the Third Board, Fourth Board loan program. I was working for the bank when that was developed. And I later was offered a job with the city to come on their side and further expand those programs. And that was the beginning of a real, 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 real good learning experience for me. I got a chance to see a lot of things happen and see how they happened and how the politics played into. So now I'm using that experience to try to help, to help my friend Billy Joe. It's just, it's just that something. And I think that this committee, this body, would be doing just as big a favor to the city of Belmont, if they had got this. Now, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I wanted to, to say that because Billy Joe could have sold this property, and you're right, a long time ago. Long time ago. There were several developers that were after him to, for him to sell, for him to sell it to him. But they were not willing to be proud of Billy Joe. Okay? Okay, I'm sorry.
Just maybe one point. Is this, I don't know if this is even working. There's one point of clarification.
Yes.
That I was just reading through this. It could be one detached single-family house by right, one detached single-family house with one accessory, or excuse me, accessory dwelling unit, and it could also be duplex, just to kind of put it out there for the record. Is that correct, Harps?
That's what I'm just saying. For Alex.
Alex, is that incorrect? By right, it could be that. So I just wanted that to be stated as well, that there are other opportunities that could be out there as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Technically, you could have two dwelling units already on there when we're looking at two houses. So just wanted to make that clear.
Okay.
My, I have a question that's sort of similar to Martha's, but I, approaching it from a little bit different angle. So just looking at the application, and Mr. Russell read out some statements from the application, but there's a statement that it would be necessary to plan and market the lots in a manner which encourages housing types consistent with the Conpris Landes Plan. You discuss that this is a neighborhood conservation area, envisioning the conservation of older areas possessing distinctive features, identity or character worthy of protection. You discuss that the new construction needs to be sympathetic to the historical development of the neighborhood, and promise that the lots in anticipated development are otherwise functionally consistent with the development of the surrounding neighborhood. And you further refer to developing the lots in a pattern and manner that complements the existing neighborhood and encourages modest development of existing lots and provides opportunities for mid-range housing that does not exist in sufficient quantities. And that's all admirable, and that's good. But, you know, we have had in the past, other applications in this neighborhood. Mr. Russell's friend from Las Vegas, a few years ago, I was only on the planning board at the time, Martha was on city council, and there had been a lot of concerns about gentrification in that neighborhood. So, you know, again, I'd ask, you know, representing Mr. Curry and being his longtime friend, and he's been in the area, are we going to make sure that we're not in fact contributing to gentrification, that we are going to build housing on these lots that is consistent with the character of the neighborhood?
I think that the city of Belmont is in complete control of that. Through Alex and his people, if you, if you approve the division of the property, that's fine. We have two lots. If somebody wants to build a structure on, on that property, and there are certain specifications that you want, they don't get that building permit until they satisfy what you want. That's the whole purpose of the, of the permitting, to make sure that what is built there is in compliance with city regulations, city ordinances, that it is compatible. Whatever is built there is going to be compatible. You can determine what it looks like, what color it is, if you want to. So, and I'm being, I'm not being facetious, but that is an exaggeration of the point. The process is never controlled by the developer unless politics gets involved and somebody gets into the higher ups. But if people like Alex and, and his staff, that's their job, to make sure that it meets the requirements that the city has set out. So good observation. But I think that's, that decision is not to be made here. The decision to be made here is a division.
Any other questions from Mr. Warren? Thank you, Mr. Warren. You start then.
Okay. Oh, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Back in January, I sold a lot to Billy Joe, on that same street on Clay Street. And it sold for seventy-five thousand on Clay Street, just a single lot. I just wanted to just go there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Russell, anything else?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Is that your, my full closing?
No.
Finish, thank you.
I just asked, I can't remember, sorry about this.
I think you've moved forward.
Can you introduce that he accepted exhibits and evidence?
We did. We accept those exhibits and make them a part of the record. Okay, thank you. All right, motion for now.
Motion, you kind of have a topic.
Second.
Oh, there's a paper.
Yes.
Harps, before we vote, I just want to, maybe you can clarify something for us, because it did come out in both the staff presentation and Mr. Russell's presentation, where, you know, references made to this is quite similar to other cases and comparisons to what we might have done before. What can, talk about what's binding.
Precedent, that's a no, no fair at all. On your decision here tonight, this is an individual. Harps, whatever, what you've done in other situations, other cases, other areas of the city are not to be considered.
And likewise going forward, any decisions?
Right, right. So, did we, now we have.
We've come out of a public hearing, and we are now moving to approve or vote on approving the special use permit.
Okay, so as a part of the approval, potential approval process, we, we as a board have to make the required findings of fact. So I will go through those one at a time, and raise your hand if you're in favor that these, the burdens been met. First, the use meets all required principles and specifications of the Land Development Code and any adopted land use plans. All in favor? Four oh. Two, the proposed plan is developed according to the plan submitted and approved will be visually and functionally compatible to the surrounding area. All in favor? Four oh. Three, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety and will not substantially injure the value of the joining property, of a, of a joining property located where proposed. All in favor? Four oh. Now, if you're so inclined, Mayor, you can take a motion that the permit, it should be granted with the proposed conditions outlined in the statute.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a lease agreement from the Old City Hall, Montross Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This item is for the lease renewal of Old City Hall. Currently, Montross area Chamber of Commerce, they lease space at Old City Hall at one fifteen North Main Street, since August of 2020, for office, meeting space, and storage space, following North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-two. Their monthly lease is seven hundred and fifty dollars per month. The area that they are currently leasing is one thousand six hundred and fifty-two square feet. It's the reference for Old City Hall. City Hall square footage in the first floor is three thousand six hundred square feet. I did talk to Mark Gordon, and he states that Montross does wish to lease this space for another one-year term. Included in the packet is a resolution detailing the lease, and then we also have a quick lease proposal that states that the projected lease effective date will be October first. The term of the lease is one year. Seven hundred and fifty dollars is the monthly lease rate, and a few other things that are identified in here that were additions to the actual lease proposal that was issued last year to Montross. If you all would like to move forward with, with the lease, then I'd like to work with the city attorney's office to create a more formalized lease agreement that we would go into and structure this final lease for the city manager to approve at some point in the future. But I'd like this, this lease to be effective October first, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have any questions, Alex?
Have they been, has the chamber been providing the ten hours of staff time per month to assist with economic development?
I can't speak for what they've provided in the past. I know that was one of the things that was lined up last year. I don't know if I have seen a detailed report on the number of hours that they have used, but possibly Main Street Association field, did you come up?
I guess, what's that name?
Those are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Um, over the last year, year and a half with Miranda, she has been attending our Edmira Vitality Committee meeting. She has been attending and participating in our Promotions Committee meetings. So I think she was, there were meeting that requirement, she was actively involved in our Main Street E P A program. Since she has now resigned and moved on the last month, there has not been participation, hopefully that will get back on track whenever they hire their new staff.
Could you, Mark?
Well, all I, I follow up, I make sure that that was in the lease. And based on what Miles was saying, that there'd be, there's going to be a more formal and detailed lease than what's in the agenda packet, I would just want that provision since we're, my understanding is that the rental rate is less than the market rate in downtown, and one of the reasons why we're doing that is to get these ten hours of staff time. I'd want that in the lease.
We agreed with that, but if I remember correctly, and Mark was in here during the last meeting, we had asked for quarterly updates from the chamber to get to us, to help us understand what they were doing with those ten hours. I, I do want to say, I think that the last time he came in, there was nothing that could like make that tangible for us to see exactly where those ten hours are transpiring to. So I do agree with Jen that that needs to be in the lease and may be included is that quarterly update, because I do know we collectively as a council wanted that last year when we reviewed this. So again, I, I guess the only comments I would say to that.
Any other questions or thoughts on lease? I know we kind of talked too about the idea of a formalized lease would be to sort of nail down some logistics around things like insurance and what space is actually being leased and that kind of thing. So I definitely think that's a good idea. So.
Just a quick question, did they know that we were voting on this tonight?
Yes, sir.
I guess I would move to approve with the understanding that a formal lease will be drafted and include provisions mentioned by myself and Alex.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Item number five is a lease agreement from the J. Paul Ford Center.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Similar to Old City Hall, the J. Paul Ford Center lease agreement is coming due in October. Currently, the Milliken Victorial History Museum has leased this space at thirty-seven East Woodrow Avenue since October of 2022, for office and storage space, following North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight, and that's two seventy-two. Their monthly lease is two hundred dollars per month. The area that is designated for the lease equates to one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine square feet. That's exclusive of the actual center, part of the Ford Center. I guess that big open area does not include that at this time. Milliken wishes to continue this lease for another year. There is a resolution inside the packet, and the lease proposal states that the term of the lease is on a month-to-month basis. I just want to point that out, that it's not structured, similar to Old City Hall, this is a monthly lease, stating the amount, stating the purpose of the lease, stating the area, and also that either party may terminate the lease upon city today's written notice. And similar to the lease agreement, I would like to work with the city attorney's office to develop a more formalized lease agreement with Milliken Victorial History Museum at this time, and have that date for the lease to begin October first, two thousand twenty-three. I don't know, Mayor.
Any questions for staff on this?
Um, just the, well, a couple. The rationale for shifting from the previous lease was a year in length to month-to-month?
Right, so given that we're going to have a discussion coming up in October regarding what the Ford Center may be looking like in the future, whether it's renovation or another use in the future, I didn't want to tie the space up for a full year. And that way, if things need to occur in there, then the appropriate notice can be given to the leasing at that time.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Um my only other comment or question was with the notice provision. If it's a month-to-month lease, I didn't think a sixty-day, that that seems counterintuitive, that the lease itself is only a month, but you have to give two months' notice to terminate it. So, but theoretically it could end before the notice period itself is is over.
I think I can work with the city attorney to square up that language a little more. I wanted to be fair to the LEC though, that if we knew that there was something that was going to occur in there, that we would give ample time to the to the LEC.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair, right? I mean, to provide that type of notice for the person who is using that facility. Again, you know, um I think, you know, we've got a lot of good faith going on here, but you know, I I personally think sixty days is is fair. I mean, we don't want to just, just immediately say we're breaking this lease and then you've got to be out of here tomorrow. That's not really feasible.
I understand, it just seems like it's it's in conflict with the month-to-month nature of, um. I mean, I I'm happy to work out whatever uh the city attorney thinks is appropriate. I I don't mean to, you know, I I agree with with what you're saying, Alex, and I have no qualms with that. It's just if it's a month-to-month and sixty-day notice, that that just strikes me as logically incoherent. You, so if you, you all work it out.
Okay.
It just doesn't, I I if if the lease is only thirty days, thirty days, but you have to give sixty days notice, does that create?
An extension of the lease.
An extension um beyond the month. Is it really a basically a sixty-day lease? Really, what, I don't know. That's, I I I appreciate the sentiment, but that just sort of stood out to me as confusing, considering it's a month-to-month. But whenever we can, I'm certainly in favor of protecting the last fee.
Yeah, I mean, if you need to structure it as like sixty-day automatically renewing terms or something like that, I mean, you could do it like that, I would imagine. Parks is smart, he can, you know, figure it out.
And real estate.
Yes. All right, uh a motion, perhaps?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda is acceptance of streets in the Amberly Phase Two neighborhood. Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Um this is very similar to what we've done second time before, particularly at the end of last fiscal year. The developer for Amberly Phase Two has completed building all those houses in there and is ready for the city to take over the streets, which is traditionally what we do when we get done. City staff, planning department have gone through and developed a punch list of everything that needed to be taken care of, crack and curves and things like that, and that work has all been completed. We're holding a development bond, which we collect when we approve the subdivision plan for the development and since the developers essentially ready to move out, even like in barn bag, we don't release it till the council accepts the streets. And in the acceptance, um you're accepting streets, there's five segments that's involved. We already own the water and sewer system in that subdivision, so that's it, and that's been taken care of through the state. We are not, in this subdivision, we are not uh going to take over the alleyways. Those remain private, looking to the HOA, and that's traditionally what we do. And there are storm drains, if they serve a public right-of-way, one of the streets will be taken over. We will maintain the storm drains. However, the alleys have storm drains that run down the middle. Those will be privately maintained by the HOA as well. So uh we have reviewed it and inspected it. They have the final surface cores of asphalt in and the stop bars and things of that nature, and so this is a, just get the city council to accept the streets, yes.
And then could you just mention, I believe there's a warranty as well that comes with it?
Yes, the, we always ask the developer to provide us a letter saying that he will warrant the streets for one year in case pothole develops or something serious like that. And we've got the letter that's attached, my recommendation, and it's not a formal bonded thing. And to be honest, we've never had to get nasty about it because we don't, we don't take them, take over the streets until they're good shit.
Any other questions? Enter data motion, accept these streets for city maintenance.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, and I think you're up again.
Yep.
River Mist Infrastructure Reimbursement.
River Mist is a subdivision that's being built down there between south of the middle school, east side, and as part of that project, we asked them to oversize a water main that they had to construct to service that neighborhood and also put in a force main which will be used in the future for the Henry's Chapel development. When, isn't when that happens, the intent was to get these things built now in association with the subdivision, so we don't have to tear apart the subdivision in later years when Henry's Chapel comes along. So the city council uh signed an agreement with the developer back in October two thousand twenty-one. The developer has installed pipes, including the oversized water main and the force main, and he has gone through the final permit approval process with the state, so they're active. Those lines are active and ready to use, so the agreement allows the developer to request up to six hundred thousand dollar reimbursement. And he came in with a higher amount, six twenty-five, so our request here is that we reimburse him the maximum, which is six hundred thousand.
Was, was this in the budget?
No, it was not, and that's why there's a budget by amendment.
So again, I understand that, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate to the fact that we kind of built a lot of kind of, I just wanted to make sure, so the budget that we reviewed, we didn't think this was coming down the pipeline or anything like that?
Uh I can't tell you because I don't get deep into the budget, so. It was only two years ago that it was approved by the council, regardless, I think we missed it.
Right, right. It is, it's not like I expected.
Okay, Jerry, remind us, why did we ask them to oversize to that extent?
Uh because that twelve-inch line will eventually go down to the Henry's Chapel, Henry's Chapel property. It'll turn on Henry's Chapel Road and come back out to South Point.
To make a loan, yeah.
And make some money for us.
And that would be needed whether or not Henry's Chapel is approved?
Uh yeah, we need something down there. So, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So again, so we we kind of talked about implications, so this is, this is where we are, this is what we're supposed to play have to pay from this and obviously the report, but just one of the concerns that I'm just kind of trying to get around is to the Enterprise Fund and some of the discussions that we had earlier on in the year for the budget and the current position that the Enterprise Fund is in. So we're going to further complete it by six hundred thousand dollars, where it was at operating, and I believe in a deficit, if that's still the case from our budget reviews earlier this year, is that correct?
Uh I, like I said, I don't participate in the budget stuff much, so.
I just want to make sure.
Jared is here.
We still have funds in the net position, but Jared can speak to the exact amount that we have and the and the net position is similar to like the general funds, unassigned fund balance. So uh we have more than six hundred thousand dollars in there to the tune of probably one, was it one point four million?
That would be after this approval.
After the approval. Yeah, after this approval, we have one point four million, but to speak to running in a debt deficit, uh you know, we're currently under really two studies right now, one for system development fees that we're going through currently and then uh the water sewer rate study that we're currently in right now too. So there's two, there's two things moving kind of simultaneously that uh that speeds are associated will be adjusted appropriately in the future.
And and potentially this is going to be my other business, but I feel like it's kind of pertinent to this as well. It could be also a third factor, which is a benefit to the city, which would be the hospital, correct? Once they're running at their capacity, which I believe Bill, did we say it was about a hundred thousand gallons a day is what they were kind of shooting for?
That's what they said, yes.
So I mean, that also is substantial as it comes to revenue, potential impact to the budget. Would you kind of agree with that, Jared, as well?
I would.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, is that also the positive that we have out there? But again, just kind of some concerns, I mean, I don't know if it would be perfect just for us to just, I know we're doing those studies, but maybe get an update on those studies as well, just to see where we're at on that. And again, I'm not trying to raise alarms or stuff, but this is a large number that's impacting a a fund of ours that we've already identified as something that we should help with.
No, I mean, to your point, I mean, that fund balance is getting a little thin, you know, down to one point four million on that.
Yeah, for the system development fee study, that draft is in hand currently and the council updated on Friday, say that we're going to put that online, where citizens can respond to it. There's a period of time that we have to leave it out there. Uh our firm will respond to those questions, help us understand what the questions were and then come through a public hearing process and then bring that to you all for approval at some point. I would say anticipate by, I was thinking like November-ish, I believe, is the date-ish that's out there right now currently. That's the way we've got it planned out for system development.
And when you do review that draft, they did a very good job of explaining how you need to restrict the system development fees you collect for the purpose of system improvements. And then, yeah, we've got to set that up and then hopefully we won't run into this situation again.
I was just going to ask, I mean, to our knowledge, do we have any other type of agreements out there that anything that could be potential add-ons to the budget?
The only other agreement that's out there is for the Henry's Chapel Road project and since that's nowhere right now, I can't tell where that stands. But I, I'm not aware of any other that we have, any other commitments.
I am, uh, if you look at section five of the agreement, there's discussion about ninety, paying ninety percent and ten percent.
Yeah.
What is that, Ike, is that?
The intent was that they would be requesting funding as they built the project. And so if they came in after thirty days or sixty days and said, we expended this amount, we would pay a ninety percent of that. But as it turns out, they waited until we had.
Okay, that that, I was having a disconnect.
So we have, that's.
And so this six twenty-five is what we'd be responsible for? And because the agreement was no more than six hundred, because I was like ninety percent of six twenty-five is five, six, three, so I was like, what? Yeah.
No, and when the agreement was passed, their estimate of cost was a lot less, but that you know prices have skyrocketed.
I'm aware.
Yeah, I I actually caught that too, and we had a conversation beforehand. So basically, the ten percent works as kind of like a retainage. And so I understand they've obtained all the permissions and permits, everything they need from the state. And so they would be owed the full hundred percent at this point, but, because they basically made one application for payment where they could have potentially requested it monthly, I think, right? Yeah, so that's what that is, yeah. I had the exact same thought, though, so.
I guess my, I I I do have one follow-up from from Alex that perhaps Jared, I, you might not be the right person to ask, but I am a bit concerned why if we knew, you know, this agreement was entered into in October twenty-one, I think, if we knew that this hit was coming, why is it not in fact in the budget?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Um so two, two things about that. Number one, I didn't know about it. So it came in a memo form from Jerry asking for the request, so it came on my radar. Uh this, I guess there's three things. Secondly, the only way that we would have been able to fund this in this year's budget is with a fund balance appropriation anyhow due to the tightness of this year's budget. So whether that would have been appropriation with the budget ordinance or as an amendment, that was going to happen. The other side of this is when this was adopted back in October twenty-one, I believe it was, we knew that was going to be happening, so what should have been happening is we should have taken up some of the system development fees and earmarked those for a future disbursement when requests came. That did not take place. I won't speak to that, but that those are the three items that I would disclose. Well, we do have tracking mechanism now. That's correct, and we've already corrected a few others uh in since my start date. So this is the last one, the one that he was talking about with Henry's Chapel, if that were to come to fruition, correct? If that were to come to fruition and we collected system development fees, they would be accounted for in the appropriate manner. And if any reimbursement uh resolution were passed, they would be earmarked in the appropriate way.
All right, well, I appreciate that, because it was, you know, it was a good point raised by my colleague and I'm, you know, I understand that there's been a lot of transition in several positions, but I'm just hopeful that we can all, you know, be in in unison and, you know, it's not like one, well, I didn't know about this, I didn't know about this, and I understand that, how would you know about it? But, you know, hopefully as we stabilize and and, you know, move forward without so much turnover that that those things won't happen, that we could have followed what you recommended with your third point coming to go and, you know, so.
I agree on all these other.
Yes, that and all the discussion about uh the items, were there any others laying around out there that we didn't know about? And so that's my understanding and there's no others that are out there, it's more of a concern.
But coordination is is important, and that's the kind of thing that people always, well, I don't know, no, it's heading its tail and, you know.
Well, and process too, so like when we enter into an agreement like this, you know, making sure that we've got a system in place to, you know, do what we plan to do.
Yeah, so, all right, well, that's good information you have, so thank you, Jared.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry or other staff?
I mean, again, it's probably just, you know, maybe a dumb question, but I'm just going to ask it for the sake of asking. If we decide not to do this, they have legal, they can come back and sue us and.
That's, again, I just wanted to, just wanted to.
And so I think you should, um, do it. Based on our, our discussion and everything, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, um, I don't see manager's report in here, but I assume you have one. Maybe not.
I do not have an outline yet. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we got the reports in here and then other business. Start with Alex.
Just really quickly, I know a couple of folks have posted about it, haven't been on social media too much, because we've been in the middle of a move, but.
You're lucky.
The, uh, the crosswalk looks really good over there at the East Catawba, you know, Keener, Eric Boulevard area. Very appreciative of that. I know that's something that council before my time initiated and something that we continue to carry the gavel on or the gong on, or however we say that. So I'm appreciative to see that. Mark or Miles, I know we had like a kind of a text or whatever in regards to the state appropriated funding and what might be potential. I know it hasn't been approved yet, but maybe just something, I don't know, maybe an update or something like that. I know you kind of gave us one, but I have a few questions in regards to it. So maybe at a future workshop or something, maybe allow for some time there. I brought it up in an earlier discussion to the water and sewer, the enterprise fund impact of six hundred K decrease. Again, I just want to make sure that we are going to be capturing or have looked at the hospital potential revenue. Again, a hundred thousand gallons a day. Myself, Bill and Miles talked about this when we did the tour of the hospital. And speaking of the hospital, again, I want to say my thanks to, one, the Abbey and also Paramount for also continuing to invest into our city. That's going to be a remarkable and great place. One just tidbit I also wanted to bring up, it seems like it's kind of a reoccurring issue and it just happened to me, me and Bill have talked about it, but I just wanted to talk it. It's not unbilled at all. But we may want to kind of true up or go back and, and, and look at our agreement with Waste Pro in regards to our requesting cans. Me and my wife were without cans for quite a few days and they told us they were going to deliver them back to back to back and they never delivered them and they never had a suitable answer for that. So I think we might want to firm up or have a conversation with Waste Pro because I talked to a lot of my neighbors and it seems like they also had a lot of issues. One, I think the most egregious was ten to fifteen days or something like that, when they promised cans and they didn't deliver. So maybe true up our agreement with them to make sure that they're actually being held accountable for, for what their responsibilities are. Other than that, again, pretty sure the staff and everything that everybody's doing, and that's, that's all I have.
Uh, just a couple of things. I would echo Alex's comments about the pedestrian improvements at Catawba and Park Street. I'm glad to see those finally accomplished. And I think they'll be a good, a big benefit to those individuals who like to walk in that area without taking their life, lives in their own hands. I will, I know this was in our weekly update, but Miles and I were at the Chamber of Breakfast last week at Gaston College with Fiber Innovation Center. And, you know, that's a really cool facility. They're, they're bringing in folks from all over the world as, as a part of that. They're talking about even people from like Germany and Switzerland, or Schweiz, if you speak German. And they were happy, you know, I know you were talking with the president of the college. They were appreciative of what we had done to enable that facility forward. They're talking about the building itself being ready in January of two thousand twenty-four, but perhaps not occupied and at full capacity for some time thereafter. But there'll be a, one of the wonderful ribbon cuttings at the appropriate time. And the only other thing I'll say, and I think Jason raised this point, you know, between our last meeting and now, we might have more to say. And I've heard from a lot of people about the quality of the playing surfaces of our fields for the recreation programs. And I know that we've sort of talked about maybe having a future workshop to, to address that. But I'm sure Jason might have some more thoughts and details about that, so I'll do that. But I echo Bill's comments as well. That's it.
Barbara?
I have a laundry list. Thank staff for getting the evidence immediately after the leak situation. On social media, ended up sounding like somebody had taken charge of it, other than the staff. And some people indicated that nothing had been done, which was not the case. And thank staff for, or getting the evidence to get that taken care of. As we look at future paving projects, I want to make sure we are a bit more careful because the tapering that needs to be done on our paving is not good. In my neighborhood, people have put out pads so that they don't bump as they go across. So you're defeating the part of what curb and gut should have its purpose. So come down in the neighborhood sometime in the city. So that very much concerns me. I have to be very careful myself. We had previously approved, or indicated, we wanted a survey of the Willerene property that the theme stores own. Somehow the situation got muddied up and there were some other properties that we were looking at. We need to go ahead and complete that survey so that we are in a better situation to negotiate with the Circle Drive property. So somehow the ball not dropped, I want that taken care of. And by the time we're looking at a September workshop, I think that's on Greenways. I want to get an update on both Greenways because I think we're continuing. I think the NC DOT is now changing some of the options or what they want. And we, we're going to have to stay with that and make sure that they honor what they have to do. The last thing is DOT. Miles, if we could please request a full study with regard to all the stoplights on Walkinson Boulevard, the intersection, particularly Park Street, South Point Road lighting, excuse me, the lights also. They're not synchronized in Main Street as well. So DOT is not doing its job to move traffic continuously. And today I think we had a big snap move out on Park Street because people were backed up twenty, thirty minutes and the police went, which I'm very appreciative that they did. But DOT is not moving traffic. And evidently, part of what happens is anytime we have storms, a lot of these lights default to an original thing and they're not checking. And I called and I complained and I, of course, as you well know, but we're to the point now, we're going to have to request something formally as approved. The other piece of this too, while they're, while we're requesting all of Parkville Drive on the state maintenance part of it, kudzu is actually growing into the road. And I came in like there were four people walking in the road. And so there was no place for them to walk on the shoulder of the road because it's covered with kudzu. So we need to ask them, go ahead and get that taken care of too, because it's a safety issue. And that's the last one.
Did you look at my notes before? If you guys are looking for consensus, I second what Martha said on NC DOT.
Didn't they tell you a few months ago, like, oh, you can just still push the button yourself or something?
Well, they said it's too complicated. I mean, that's what they said, and they could maybe train one of our police to do that. But they made it sound like it's not possible, so they just need to get over here and do it.
Well, I would certainly echo that sentiment about a workshop preferably with NC DOT. And I would further that by saying that I think we should have personnel from NC DOT from both the highway and the rail division present, and maybe someone from NPO. And my main point of concern there is from my own experience, probably with a lot of you as well, as well as from citizen complaints that I've heard about recently regarding the intersection at NC seven, NC seventy-four. I know that there's plans to reconfigure that intersection as you're coming out to eighty-five and how that's going to look in the future. A particular concern for me is how the future design potentially of the trolley project may impact the reconfiguration of that intersection. Because if there is any, in my opinion, if there's any infringement on the NC DOT's ability to improve that intersection and, and relieve some of the congestion that's already there, that, that's going to be a hard sell for me. So I'd like to hear, you know, what their thoughts are on whether there's any impact from the trolley or even just leaving the rail lines there as they are, then being able to reconfigure that, that intersection. Because many towns, you know, we're probably all set through multiple lights on Central all the way back past Cedar just to get through to an intersection at Bojangles', because you've only got one through lane there. But yeah, I would certainly recommend that. As far as the rec fields, Jim, I would certainly agree with that. We're hearing that from a lot of folks, especially those parents of, of young children. I mean, I think obviously a lot of it's a function of the growth we've had. I think it's going to be a short and a long-term approach. I think short-term, you know, maybe, maybe we can address this just with Parks and Rec about, you know, bringing the, this shape of the current fields up to standard. But then long-term, obviously, I know we're, we all have an interest in looking at adding to the inventory of recreational fields that we have access to. Thirdly, I think we are currently undergoing a salary study, Mox, for staff?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that ongoing? It's kind of my attention, and I don't want to presume that this is true, but with regard to the police department, that the rate of increase for salaries of existing officers, including those that have advanced certifications, that that rate of increase has not kept up with the rate of increase for new hires. And that's something I imagine that's already a point of consideration in that study, but I just want to make sure that that's something that has some focus on it. And then lastly, the crosswalks, I mean, I would echo what my colleagues have said about that. I think the signal for crosswalks have been very well received from everybody I've heard of. The one thing I would add is that I think that a number of folks have now, they like it so much that they're saying, hey, well, have you thought about the intersection of Central and, have you thought about the intersection of Central and Keener? Those are valid arguments, in my opinion. Those are all highly trafficked areas, you know, with high foot traffic. And I think, you know, to the extent that we can consider that, hopefully it wouldn't take as long as this one did to enact. But I think that's something I'd like to, you know, explore in the process as well. That's all.
All right. I would just echo a lot of what's already been said about traffic on the Wal-Mart. I've received some feedback specifically about the Park Street and Walkinson intersection and the light timing there. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse on that, but I think that's obviously something that's got the attention of the entire council. Would like to thank staff who helped put together the, the party for Charlie, particularly Phil and Cassidy. That was a nice event and, and Charlie appreciated it. He actually called in Walmart yesterday and told me how much he, how much fun he had, how much he enjoyed it. So, you know, I, I think that was a great event and thank you for that. The pedestrian crossing on Park is great. Kind of like what Jason said, I think it's so successful that, you know, now we're getting requests to do it all over town. So we will figure out how to do that, I guess, and go onward. On the, the state budget, initial feedback that I've gotten from our representatives is that we will be getting grants for the fire truck and the trolley along with a few other things that were not specifically detailed to me. But I'm told that the, the budget will be available for public consumption here within the next week or so. So hopefully we'll have some more details around that shortly. But I'm told that Gaston County did exceptionally well in this year's allocations. So I'm optimistic that we will get a lot of what we asked for.
Well, thanks to those.
Thank you, Tim, for our state legislative orders.
Yes.
Yes.
When you say other things, so potentially the additional items outside of the trolley and the fire truck could also be potentially funded?
Uh, yeah, he, he told me specifically that there were some water sewer projects that were included that he could not remember specifically what they were, along with a few other things. Basically, the speaker's office called up Representative Lawfis and wrote a rather long list to him. He was struggling to write it down while they were sort of like going through this, you know, quick rundown, so. But it, it'll all be available here shortly. He said he'd send me a list when he had it, so once I get that, I'll, I'll share that with the group.
Well, if I indicated a message to you guys, if we didn't get Greenway money, then we should have some funds freed up on this other that we're not going to have to spend. So I'll be hoping that fast for Greenway money, so save me that.
Yeah, well, yeah, we will, we will see what we get and.
Fair procedural question, maybe for you, I'm not sure. But with grants like that that we do get from the state for that are earmarked for specific projects that may or may not have already even been approved, are we obligated, once we take that money, to use it for that specific?
It depends.
Yeah, like last year we got a grant that was for capital projects. Yeah, so it was very sort of overended. It sounds like based on what I've been told, that the grants that we're getting this year will be more specifically targeted. So like with the, the fire apparatus, it would have to be spent on a fire apparatus. But, yeah, so, but it, it's really up to whatever they want to do. You know, they're the legislature and they get to make the rules, so the rest of us are just along in the ride.
Martha brought up a good point, just to confirm too, for public consumption. These monies that are being presented to us by the state potential grants that haven't been approved yet is not in our budget, correct? We didn't even use a plug for any type of money we would be gifted, right?
No, I didn't catch any of that, sorry.
We did not include any of this potential monies coming towards us to the city of Belmont in the month this year from there. So I just wanted to kind of say that this will be a windfall for us that will just eliminate projects we funded for potentially either going to the general fund or going to fund additional projects.
Right. Well, and I think that was part of our strategy there too, was to go conservative on the budget. Hope for the best, plan for the worst.
I just wanted to make that. And of course, as a process, I'm trying to articulate that.
Of course, my wife wants to point out it is state taxpayer money and we are citizens of the state that pay taxes. So it is sort of, you know.
Yeah, we sent it up to Raleigh, Raleigh sends it back.
Not necessarily.
Well, it's money we don't have in the budget.
That's it.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in paper?